For now?
Yes. Just, I mean, it's just one. I mean, nothing really screwed up.
Okay. So we want to, it's off?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good evening, welcome to the April 12, 2016 meeting of Manchester Town Council. Apologize for getting started here a couple minutes later as everybody was getting settled. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very good. First order of business, approval of the March 8, 2016 minutes. Had an opportunity to just take a look, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as prepared?
I make a motion, we approve the March 8, 2016 minutes.
Our second motion?
Motion is second. Any discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have receipt of the February 2016 Treasuries Report. Again, we looked at the check register for February last month. And corrections or objections to receiving the Treasuries Report as prepared? Your motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the February 2016 Treasuries Report. Let me add the check register there as well.
Sure.
And it's March 2016 check register.
I'll second the motion.
The motion to receive both the February Treasury Report and the March check, March check register. And a second, any discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor's report, a couple of items of note here. Bulk trash will be, make sure I get this right, April 20. If you have large items that will be subject to bulk trash, please call Hughes and let them know. And they also may give you special instructions on some of those items and how to prepare them. We now have yard waste is the spring seasons, that will carry through till approximately November. That is on Fridays. Please keep items to, no more than four feet in length, four inches in width, I'm sorry. Four feet in height, eight feet in length.
That's actually dimensions for when the town does it on April 19.
Oh, okay. So you can put your other stuff down, no plastic bags. On April 19, we'll pick up larger items, tree ranches and those sort of things.
And that's, Hughes does it, it's gonna be, have to be either like trash cans or cramp bags.
Okay. So we'll have the, we'll get those details, I'm sure, I know we have them in the newsletter, but we'll get those details up on the, on the website as well. Want to thank the Nature Center for the Easter egg hunt. I know they have a number of, I'm sure Mr. Councilman Howell will go over the different events they have going on. I attended the Easter egg hunt there over the past month. And as always, it was a well-attended event here in town. It was very well-run, of course, the kids scoop everything up in about the first 45 or 50 seconds, but it was a good, it was a good event. And then one, just item of housekeeping nature, each year, Mr. Colt Rider sends in a letter with his intent to spray on land that's either adjacent to town. So we have a motion to, and she received a letter here in the mailbox with respect to that. So if there's no objections, that is an action item, we can get a motion to allow Mr. Colt Rider to spray.
I make a motion, we allow Mr. Colt Rider to spray.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, any discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, that is all I have, I'll turn it over to the Town Administrator Report.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll go ahead and start with the March Administrative Report. Under pending items, there's no changes in either the S H A project or the Sheets project. The new town hall police station, we had a progress meeting today, and that project is approximately 36 percent complete. Feel free to contact me or stop by the job site and see the job superintendent, John Riddings. He'll be glad to give you a hard hat and take you in and show you the progress that's been taking place up there. Under code enforcement, rental housing and new construction. On the 22nd of March, Chief Hest, Michelle Wilder, our town attorney, and I met with Mr. Chris Elias. He's the code inspector for the city of Westminster. Mr. Elias gave us some very good informative information on how the city deals with code violations. And we may look at modeling something after the city of Westminster and how they do that. So we were pretty, pretty happy with the information that he gave us. Under new construction, Manchester Farm Section 7, we received five building permits. They've been pulled for that area out there. Under miscellaneous items, our Sustainable Communities Work Group met on March 16. We reviewed information from the Key Goal Survey that was passed out to the group. This information is being compiled and we'll be reviewing that at our next meeting on May 18. Something I'd like for the Mayor and the Council to think about. I think it would be good if, if the Mayor and Council would look at making this work group a standing committee. I think it's very informative, they bring a lot to the table, and I just think it's something that you ought to think about doing, just for food for thought. I copied the Mayor and Council on the status of proposed legislation as supplied by Ms. Brenda Denny at Carroll County. I'd like for you to take a look at that, it's some very good information. That was one of the things that I spoke to you about a few months ago in reference to the water shut-off notice. And of course, that failed. But there's other, other information in that packet that I gave you. The brush and yard waste site at Water Street. This site's been permanently shut down to the illegal dumping that continually takes place. The town did receive a grading permit from Carroll County for this site. And that site is currently now stabilized. And we should have our inspection of that site tomorrow. Hopefully, that'll be taken care of. So we just had, I mean, that's been, that was a good idea, it worked out very well. But unfortunately, people were dumping on us and then the town would have to pay to have it called out. So that site is permanently closed off out there. And of course, with the brush pickups and the weekly yard waste pickup, it should make it easier for all the residents in town. Okay, moving right along. You have in front of you the March Public Works Report. You have a monthly water and wastewater status report for March. Our folks did replace a six-inch distribution valve at York and Victory Street on March 17. I want to let everybody know that fire hydrant flushing is scheduled for April 27, beginning at 9:00 p.m. And we'll post that both on website, cable TV, and Facebook. Under wastewater, we did have a sampling violation which occurred on February 16. The Mayor and Council was copied on my letter to M D E explaining of the violation. And of course, M D E was notified both by letter and by phone when we were notified in reference to our sampling violation. Our effluent switch-over from stream discharge to spray irrigation took place on March 1 with no problems. We have two action items here. The replacement of the effluent irrigation pump for our spray field operation, which you have in front of you. And also, we received bids back for a 2005 truck that we were selling. So Mayor, we can come back to those for the action items. Under stormwater, the Skate Park Stormwater Management Facility, that project is moving forward. The Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility retrofit. County reps and I will be on-site for a meeting on, let's see, April 20 at 5:30. We're gonna be talking to the bordering property owners out there, just to tell them, you know, what, what our plans are and what we would like to see out there. So if they have any questions, we can answer them. That'll be 5:30. When I say on-site, we're going to be meeting at the North Wastewater Pumping Station, right at Michelle Road and Route 30. So if anybody's interested and intending, feel free to come out. Under maintenance roads and parks, we had one snow event which occurred on March 4. Storm drain repair on Maiden Lane took place on March 10. And that was in preparation for the repaving project on Maiden Lane and Westminster Street, which was scheduled to begin tonight. We're gonna be doing that at night. Unfortunately, the contractor has been pushed back a day because of the rain yesterday. So that'll take place tomorrow night, we'll be starting tomorrow night on that project. It'll be Westminster Street from Main Street to Park Avenue, and Maiden Lane from Main Street to Westminster Street. So we're gonna, it's, it's a busy intersection, it's a busy-traveled alley. And we're gonna be doing that work at night to take care of that. Also, my last item is we had an employee appreciation luncheon on March 24 for all the, all of our employees that participated in, in the blizzard. We invited the subcontractors in, which two out of the three came, the other one could not make it. I wanted to mention this last month, and I didn't have the full council here. But I do want to mention that, that our folks did a fantastic job this year, especially during the blizzard. As I mentioned, we worked very well, our police department, fire department, our public works employees. I mean, these folks were out for three and a half days straight, and they did, they did a heck of a job. So we, we felt it was necessary that we show them our favor, and we invited them in for an appreciation lunch and all the employees. So I just want to say thank you to Donnie Knott, the Director of Public Works, Raymond White, our Maintenance Supervisor, and all the folks that helped out during that time. So that's it. Any questions for me? We have those two action items.
Steve, just one quick question, don't go any details, I know you'll inform us. But you're meeting with Mr. Elias. Good ideas, some things that maybe you'd be able to adopt?
Very good, very good idea.
Good, that's all I need.
They follow, the Council, I mean, Wilder, I shouldn't say it, but they follow a national standard, which is very helpful. So they, they, you know, look at the violation and then they go back to the national standard, which the city of Westminster has adopted. And they've had very good success with that.
Good, sounds promising.
Pretty happy with that. The two action items.
All right, we have two actual items here. Separately, the first one, Spray Field Effluent Pump Bid. So we received a bid for a Homeless Submersible Sewer Pump model. The model being the record, 40 horsepower, 40 horsepower pump, believe it or that. We had a budget figure of $14,000, we had two bids come in. Fluid Solutions for $13,513 and Site Specific for $15,252. Steve, just, I guess, general question, both, both bids were for the exact model that we were seeking? No appreciable difference in the, in the terms and conditions?
That staff recommends going with Fluid Solutions for $13,513.
Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bid from Homea Submersible Sewer Pump, from Fluid Solutions, for $13,513.
I'll second that.
A motion, second and a discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And then with the 2005 Chevrolet Pickup. So we got six bids here ranging from $2,000 to $8,500. Kelly Blue Book values ranging from $73,000 to $8100. So somebody bid a little bit over the Kelly Blue Book.
Obviously, he wants it.
So that's, is that the staff recommendation, Steve?
Yes, staff recommendation would be good to the gentleman that bid $8,500.
I think his name is maybe Paul Kuvaris?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Here we go, motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we, in regard to the 2005 Chevrolet Pickup truck, that we accept a bid of $8,500 from Mr. Paul Kuvaris.
I'll second it.
Motion is second and discussion, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, these are action items. And Steve, thank you for bringing up the employee, employee appreciation luncheon. I unfortunately not able to make it during, during the week, during the day. At least on that given day, I don't know, were, were, you were able to make it?
I was, yes.
Okay. So we had, we did have some representation there from, from this board. And I know that the feeling is unanimous from us, that the, that the crew just did, the crew and the subcontractors really did an outstanding job with a really challenging, at least a challenging February. A lot of the winter wasn't too bad. And once we were all able to get out and go about our, our daily business, kept hearing back, and I even heard from folks in Annapolis that, you know, everything up here is much higher and the roads were great, and the further you get towards Annapolis, the, the more balled up it was. So I, I think that once again, we led the pack in, in snow removal and helping folks moving around Manchester.
They did a fantastic job. And I want to add one thing, speaking of fantastic jobs, Kelly is doing a fantastic job working with the FEMA folks. We met with them twice. And she, she has all the paperwork in place. I mean, Kelly and I have gone through this how many times in the past? And, yeah, and, and she, she's doing a fantastic job. So we'll recover some of that much in any respect.
As always.
She is, she's good.
As always. Anything would be wonderful, but that would be great.
Yeah, I think that would obviously be a good thing. So I, one item that I failed to mention during the Mayor's Report, that Q1 water bills are out. They're due here April 30. I know some months we have that 30th versus 31st, but shouldn't be any confusion this month as there is no April 31st. So please remember to pay your water bills. Police report, are, I know, we have one here for the record, are you?
I do, yes.
So Chief Hess is on, on vacation, a well-deserved vacation this week. So the Town Administrator will handle the police report.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council members. The Manchester Police Department responded to 63 calls for service in the month of March. Investigations resulted in eight persons being criminally charged. Most of the charges are drug-related. The MPD had two Part I crimes, both were thefts, and both were cleared criminal charges. The recap is followed, and you can see the recap below. Two CDS heroin distribution arrests, three CDS possession arrests, two were heroin and one was marijuana, one theft, and two assault arrests. The traffic hotspots that they hit were Milliway, Main Street, Southwestern, and Shore Mill Drive. Seventy-seven traffic enforcement stops were made, 25 state citations were written, and 52 warnings were written. Under notes, and, and this is very important because I previously read this. The county is still battling the heroin epidemic. Manchester had its first heroin overdose this month. Several other fatal overdose cases have occurred across the county, Westminster being the hardest hit. There was one in Limeburg during the first part of April. We are continuing enforcement efforts and intel sharing. I'm confident in saying that your police department, along with the Hampstead Department, are the leaders in this battle for the county. Collectively, we have prosecuted, pending prosecution of eight dealers. Year-to-date, we've had four Part I crimes in comparison to three for the same time period in 2015. Sincerely, John Hess, Chief of Police.
Any questions related to the police report? Okay, move on. Next item on the agenda is, I'm gonna skip eight and go straight to nine here. The Charter Amendment Resolution Number 1-2016, amending residency requirements for council members. This is an item that, that we've talked about off and on for, for a number of years. We made some adjustments to this, I believe, I don't know, two years ago, maybe? Last year, less, last year? And this is one that we did, did not make at the time. But this really, I think, brings us in line with what neighbors, neighboring jurisdictions do. So it's, it's really as simple as council members should maintain a continuous occupancy of a primary residence in town, switching from at least one year immediately preceding the election to two years immediately preceding the election. Maintain a primary residence and be a qualified voter, same thing for two years instead of one year. So Kelly, this is something that we introduced tonight?
You can actually pass it tonight.
Okay.
It has to lay for essentially 50 days. I have to do advertising, I want to say four consecutive times. There, there's a lengthy process versus a regular one.
Regular one, that's right. Anybody have any discussion?
Make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, we, I guess we can have a motion to pass this if there's no discussion.
We're also, and you may have said this and I missed it, that obviously, we have to keep permanent domicile in the town during your time in office, which we all know.
Right, I, I didn't read that, but it wasn't a change, so I didn't read it.
Okay, but I mean, you know, so.
It's a change?
Yeah. Yeah, but go one year.
No, no.
No, this is after the election.
You have to remain, keep domicile while you're?
In your office.
Right, in office.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that that was on there.
Right, so I think the current rule is, the current rule is you have to maintain a primary residence and be a registered voter, qualified voter, for one year prior to the election. And then during your term in office, maintain a permanent domicile.
Right.
Similar, or, or, most other locations that we've been able to figure out, we really didn't have time to research this and see what everybody else was doing. So as an example, Hampstead is two years, you have to be a resident for two years, be a qualified voter for two years, and then still maintain your, your residency during your term. So that part, I don't think changes, it's just going from one year to two years, right? Any discussion on, on that? I know we had some work session discussions. So hearing the discussions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Charter Amendment Resolution 01-2016 regarding two years of immediate occupancy preceding the election in Manch, in the town of Manchester.
Okay, I think it works.
I'll second the motion.
Your motion is second, any other discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously, so we tell you'll start the process of advertising as required for a charter resolution. Next item of business is Ordinance 222, related to the fiscal year 17 budget. So the important piece here is, for folks that, that don't know, we've been working on, on a budget for, really since January, the process starts in January. Staff spends a lot of time behind the scenes figuring out, gathering estimates for what things are gonna cost, what, what the revenue stream is gonna look like in terms of new houses brought online, and fees, water rates, sewer rates, property tax, all of those things. And then, then this group gets in and, sometimes very copacetically and other times a little less so, but, but they're a little more spirited. We go over, you know, priorities and find ways to come up with what will be our final budget. We're still, I'm gonna say 80, 85 percent down that path. But there's a timeline where we introduce things and set the tax rates. And then as we continue to gather estimates, and some of the last things to come in will be things like insurance rates and those things which we, we don't get into a little, you know, almost the 11th hour. So what we do tonight is introduce the, the ordinance that carries the budget. The draft budget is available for public consumption and comment. And then we'll continue to work on that between now and May, and then pass a final budget in May. So the important piece now is, but we do have to set our tax rate so that that can be advertised and our attention's what the tax rate is. Obviously, you're not gonna read the whole budget, you can get that here if you care to look at individual line items. But Ordinance 222 maintains the current tax rate of $2.16, so it's 21.6 cents per $100 of assessed value. So I'd like to commend the, the staff and, and this board, really everybody on this board, for working very diligently again to come up with, with a budget that maintains, and I believe this is right, we have the second lowest tax rate in, in all of Carroll County for any municipality that has a police department. And if you incorporate police and then some other services that we provide, it's the lowest tax rate. And we're really able to do that without much of, of an industrial tax base. We just don't have the, the land that Hampstead or some other places have in order to put things like an airport or, or larger industrial or retail. So it's really done through efficiencies. So that is, does, anybody else have any comments on the introduction of the budget?
We have another work session end of this month to talk, maybe some more fine tuning?
And if you all wanna decide what day you think is best? Cause I think I had it scheduled Wednesday, but I believe you're doing a work session, planning zoning, or there's a BZA, there's, there's something else going on.
I had it for Tuesday, the 26th.
I had it for Tuesday also.
26th.
Okay. Does that work for everyone?
Does everybody want to check their calendars real quick and see, because we can set that right now?
There was a conflict, but I think I had mentioned to Michelle about maybe rescheduling the planning and zoning meeting. Cause she sent a message out to planning and zoning saying, here's a conflict, cause that's also a work session for the council.
Okay.
I think she sent down another date.
Or check and just let us know.
Check and I'll shoot you something tomorrow.
That's fine.
We can, we can coordinate it and set it up via email.
Yeah.
So the other thing that Kelly mentioned just, just before, hand with the meeting was, if those two meetings, if, I know some people have conflicts different nights. So if those two meetings have to be held due to people's schedules, we can really just separate, right? We'll just jam, like we let planning and zoning come back here if they have more people, and we'll just go into one of the offices and, don't wear a coat, so it'll go, it'll get hot.
So we're gonna settle in for the 26th, that Tuesday?
With Dale checking and Michelle about the?
So why don't we set that as tentative for tonight?
We'll check with her, cause I'm pretty sure they are having that one rescheduled.
Okay.
Okay.
Tentatively 26th.
Tentatively 26th unless we hear, as well confirm with email. Okay. Any other, any other comments related to, to the budget, the introduction of the budget? And then for everybody out there too, the, it's May, right Kelly, that has the public hearing? So if you want to get a copy, we can make copies available to you if you have comments. We have opportunity, one, you can attend the work sessions too if you'd like. We'll have an opportunity for public comment, the official public comment at the, at the public hearing. All right, next, order business, Ordinance 223, which adjusts the water rate by 25 cents per thousand gallons. So we have separate rates for property tax, water, and sewer. The water and sewer, we do our best to, to make those balance. So as cost drivers change, we try to make those balance so that one of those funds isn't, isn't taking to go for others. Now, there's a little bit of, this is some art, probably mostly science, but some art in the sense that some of our folks and some of our equipment is, is shared for efficiency purposes between Public Works water and sewer. So we do our best to make that as accurate as we can. And then from time to time, just due to the cost of getting water, treating it, getting it to homes, and then returning it to the environment for somebody else to use, you know, those costs go up. So this is an increase of 25 cents from $3 to $3.25 per thousand. So to put it in context, an average home uses approximately 15,000 gallons per quarter. So it would be an increase of $3.75 per quarter for an average, an average home would use 15,000 gallons. Any comments or questions in respects to water rates?
But I guess still doesn't cover the cost.
It, it, that's a good point, that's a good point. So we, we've done everything we, we could. When I say that there's art to it, it, it does cost more than that. And I, I know that the Town Administrator counseled us on, on this and what, what it really does cost. So we are trying to artificially keep that low, but it's really balancing between the different revenue streams. And then not everybody pays those equally. So some people that, if it's a, say, a more expensive property, they're gonna pay a higher, they're gonna pay more property tax than if we're subsidizing the water more. So we do our best to, to make those balance.
So basically, right now, the town is still subsidizing some of the water for everybody at this point?
That's correct, that, best to my knowledge.
From what you said, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
So Steve, what, what was the estimate of what it, what it does cost?
Closer to $5 per thousand to produce it. And we're at $3.25, so we're subsidizing off of our unit charges to help pay the cost per thousand gallons. And the drivers are, are chemicals, electric salaries, someone knows who the big driver is.
Health insurance for the people working in.
Health insurance, correct.
Right, so, yeah, all things that are expensive and go up. Okay. So we went along, next is questions and comments from the community? Tracy, did anybody sign in? Anyone that, that did not sign in, would, would you like to bring anything up? Do you mind coming up? I know you're an old veteran by now, but?
No, that's okay.
Oh, you're just saying hi, okay.
Just saying hello.
Oh, you're just saying hello, okay.
Okay.
We're waiting.
Anybody else have anything to address?
How about you, young man? I see you, you wanna talk to him?
I see him, you want to talk to him? You want to come up and talk? No? You shook, did you?
My gosh, he looks terrorized.
Yeah, you look like you, I thought maybe you wanted to say something.
Let's go another way.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, what I want to say is, he wants to say motion to adjourn now.
All right, well then we'll move into committee reports. Councilman Smith?
We do not have a meeting this month. We will have it in May, and again, hopefully, hopefully we'll finalize the franchise agreement. But as of right now, I don't have anything, I'll have a report next month.
Okay. Councilman Warner?
All right, we are currently working on the Banner City application, which is due in May. And also, Youth Representative Andrew Epley apologizes for not being here. Tonight is a home, yes, a home game at Manchester Valley, and he's on the lacrosse team, he's the goalie. So he asked me to share that at Manchester Valley, from May second to thirteenth, they're doing AP testing. May seventeenth, from six to nine, is the ensemble concert. Prom is May twenty-first at Martins West in Baltimore, and on May twenty-third, they're having an art show and chorus concert from six to nine p.m. All the sports schedules can be found online on the school website under athletics, and he encourages, encourages you to come out and support your reigning champions in softball and girls lacrosse, as they hope to keep the title and add on more.
How is that girls lacrosse team doing? Are they still, are they still winning? I don't know. I'll ask Andrew.
Sure. I have no idea.
That'll be a question for Andrew next month.
I think they are, they, yeah. And then also, Councilman, we can touch base offline. I, I don't know if it fits into the Banner City application or not, but I went and met with Boy Scout troop three twenty over here. They, they had some, some people there, some that were not make it, were not able to make it that night, so I'm rescheduling another time to, to get in and talk with them. So I know that we have an app, we have a requirement to go visit schools, but if that also fits in, then we can document that as well. Okay, Councilman Chelley?
The next MAMA meeting is April twenty-first at noon at Spargos. Steve had touched on the Sustainability Committee and perhaps making it, or Task Force, and perhaps making it a standing committee, I agree with that. They are in the midst of a strategic plan, and strategic planning is never static, it's always ongoing, because things change in, in your environment, and you have to react to them. So I would, I would agree that if possible, we make that a standing committee.
Yeah, I, I agree with that recommendation as well. That was, I don't want to talk ad nauseam about this, but one of the mayor's trainings I went to, the big focus with last year was, was emergency preparedness, and this year was strategic planning, what they call cathedral planning, or, you know, base and middle, and then, so, yeah, that'd be something that, I think that we've been getting value out of that committee that we certainly should look at making that a permanent addition. Hey, Councilman Howe?
We have a lot here. The next event at the Nature Center will be Spring Fest on May the first, starts at noon until, and then on May the fifteenth, it is a plant swap from one to three. Bring a plant, take a plant, bring and take, do whatever. And there's two star parties starting at seven p.m. on May twenty-second and June the third. The gentlemen will be there with the telescope to look at the things, the stars. And there are bocce tournaments on June eighteenth, July sixteenth, and August twentieth. And also, if anybody's interested in giving a gift of, of a tree, to dedicate a tree in the park, if, for someone who's passed or someone you just want to honor, there's, I think there's brochures out in the lobby, you can pick them up. So hope to see you guys at some of these events.
Can we, I don't know if we do or not, can we make sure we get those out on the Facebook page and on the website too, so that?
We checked, they're there.
Okay.
They're on the Facebook, they're, yeah, they're on that, they're on the TV, they're in the lobby, they're on the website, all the beds are there, and they're on the Nature Center website.
Okay. But one thing I've been noticing is, increasingly, we post them on, on the, on the Facebook, but more people seem to be, that seems to be gaining momentum.
On Facebook?
Yeah, the same way that the communities have gained momentum, and they're now linking with.
I will check and make sure they're on Facebook.
Our town, so even if we have reminders, like, hey, just so everybody knows, this coming Sunday is going to be such and such, and then we can try to increase participation. Okay. Councilman Wilder?
Okay, I had updated the council last month on planning and zoning's efforts toward the completing the comprehensive plan. We're still a ways off, we have until two thousand eighteen. We're supposed to have these completed every ten years, so it was last done in two thousand eight, so we'd have some time, we're just trying to stay ahead of the game. I'd mentioned that we will be coming to the council at some point to make recommendations, because it's up to the council to decide where we want to go. There's some pretty big decisions to be made. The big lingering question is, how big do we want to be? You know, we were approved for five thousand, we're now at fifty-four hundred in town, so big decisions like that, where we want our municipal growth areas to be, so we'll be coming forward with recommendations. I think Ryan, Alex Periconi's been trying to get in touch with you guys and playing phone tag. He wants to get your opinion, you have spoke?
Yeah.
Oh, good. He wanted to get Ryan's opinion on actions that we should consider. You know, the school decision has a big impact on what we will do as planning and zoning as part of the comprehensive plan. So we just need to understand some things, we're considering being a little more proactive, sending some letters, making, providing some advice, and again, just trying to figure things out, because before we can really go forward with a big plan, we need to know what's going to happen with the schools, because that has such a big impact. So we'll be, we'll be doing that. Our next regular meeting is next Tuesday, where we plan to focus discussions on plans for a new liquor store. Number One North wants to build a block down, a new, a new building, new store, so we'll be talking about that. And then, as we had mentioned, we had a workshop planned for the twenty-sixth, and I'm pretty sure we had rescheduled that, so we'll probably move that out. And that's continuing discussions on the comprehensive plan. So I'll confirm that.
Yeah, Alex Periconi and I spoke, and then we're going to stay in contact as things develop with the schools, because that's really, like you said, it's a, it's a big piece of it, and I imagine, there's really a couple of things. The two limiting factors coming up will be sewer capacity, what the options are around that, right, is can we just add on to it, or, you know, I know that it gets more complicated and expensive than that, but, so we need to keep an eye on that. And the second would be the schools, which is a little bit outside of our control at this point, but things are developing pretty rapidly, and then what we talked about was, as things get a little further along with the schools, which we're going to talk about tonight, where things are in executive session, that I'll come in or have one of the attorneys come in and think of planning and zoning, tell them, you know, what we know, but, so I'll get all you guys up to speed, or the council will, on where, where that lawsuit and appeals process is. But ultimately, it seems like maybe within the next month, we should know a lot more. I think that if, if the school closure does go ahead as planned, according to our Ordinance One Thirty-Eight, then we're going to be essentially locked off anyway, at least for the, for the next, you know, couple of years until there's a plan in place to address school overcrowding. So like you said, I, I think that between, was it two thousand sixteen and a half now, essentially, we'll have to keep an eye on that as we finalize that comprehensive plan going into two thousand eighteen.
Good. Good, thank you for that update.
Okay. Anything else for this board? No, just said it. Youth Representative's not here tonight. There's nothing else, like a motion to move into a, a closed meeting to discuss legal issues pursuant to state government Article Ten dash five oh eight A seven, to consult with legal counsel and obtain legal advice. You have a motion?
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting and begin a closed meeting in regards to state government Article Section Ten, Five Oh Eight A seven.
I second the motion.
All right, motion in a second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good night.